It's 5:15, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with roll call. Jessica Crosby here. Tony Corpey, not yet, but hopefully she'll come. Tina Sather.
Here.
Joanne Smith.
Here.
Dale Johnson.
Bruce Raboyne.
Here.
Roxanne Schockstedt-Dietrich here. Kevin Gerber.
Here.
Mitch Erickson.
Here.
Okay, and now would everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, could I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented? I'll make that motion.
A second.
All those in favor?
Hang on, just one second. Just one comment on number 21, which we have approved an unpaid lead for Ashley Koscheck for the 23-24 school year. I would like to add, as recommended by administration, as you, I mean, again, we're supporting what's going on. She wrote you a letter. If it turned to be, you know, every day, all day, for, and then we may have to, you know, look at things differently. So I just thought we should put on there, you know, as recommended, ongoing by administration.
Yeah.
You know, so right now, 100% I'm going to support it, and I'll mention it, but I would like that wording added.
Okay dokey. Now, all those in favor? I opposed. Motion carried. And now, we will go to the Elk Student of the Month.
Well, we go Elk Benedict here, so Preston Benedict. Preston Benedict is one of the Elk Lodge 1599 Students of the Month for December. Preston was the son of Kerry Obermeyer Benedict and Vance Benedict. Preston is excelling at Falls High School and has taken most of the college and school classes. Two years in the CIS English, two years math, two years Social Studies, along with a semester Business course. Preston has rounded his education out with a good exposure to Woods 1 and 2, Hot Metals 1 and 2, Welding 1 and 2. Ms. Rudolph commented, Preston is extremely hardworking young man. He is one of those students who will always go the extra mile, even if it is not asked of him. I can't say enough about how much he's grown and matured these past few years. He filled college classes his junior, senior year to push himself, and with his new challenges, he's thriving. Not only is he a great student academically, but one of the nicest kids with the most caring heart. I'm so proud of him. Ms. Manasa said, Preston is fabulous student and incredibly hardworking. I have been impressed with him over the last couple of years, and he has taken the most challenging math courses we offer at Falls High School. He's grown so much, not only as a math student, but as a person ready to take on life's next challenges. With his work ethic, attention to detail, and determination, I have no doubt he will be successful at anything he puts his mind to. Preston earned the right to be inducted into the Minnesota Honors Hall of, Minnesota Honors Society as a junior, and has remained active throughout the past two years. He participated in bass fishing since 7th grade, the Bronco trap team since 7th grade. Outside of school, Preston likes to work and do just about anything outside, especially fishing and hunting. Following high school graduation, Preston plans to finish his AA degree at Minnesota North College Rainy River, then possibly continue with the technical program with the desire to get hired by Customs and Border Protection. Preston Benedict, December Elk Student of the Month. Adley Dietrich is one of the Elk Lodge 1599 Students of the Month for December. Adley's parents are Daniel and Benjamin Dietrich. Adley has seized the opportunity to take two years of college in the school math, English, and social studies, along with the business class. It is a different report, let me tell you. He has maximized the opportunity to gain both high school and college credit while at Falls High School. He rounded out his education with chemistry, physics, Spanish, and engineering, to name a few. Adley has participated in golf, in which he is varsity captain. He's been active at Student Council. Was inducted into the Minnesota Honors Society, in which he is a student rep, and is active in catering. Outside of school, Adley likes to read books, work at his job, and hang out with friends. He commented, this balance helps me be who I am. Ms. Manasa said, Adley is a standout student due to his drive to be a lifelong learner. He is never afraid to ask questions, and he often comes to ask them on his own time. I believe this has been one of his biggest factors in the growth I have witnessed in him over the last three years. While naturally intelligent, Adley demonstrates great maturity in understanding that there is always more to learn. I look forward to seeing all that he accomplishes. His future is bright. Mr. Sandberg commented, Adley is well-deserving as Student of the Month because he's always prepared at a very high level. He's very passionate about his work. He cares deeply about his learning and always puts forth the extra effort to achieve success. His dedication to academics shows in his effort, desire, and drive to always succeed. He's a true ambassador for Falls High School. As always shown, he is an excellent student and will achieve success at the next level in life. Following graduation, this spring, Adley plans to attend a four-year university for mechanical engineering and hopes for a master's degree after that. You're going to have to help me out here. His dream job would be to work for, is it DeCotti? Is that right? Okay, DeCotti, which is Apple Speed. I have to look it up. Italian motorcycle manufacturing company. It's owned by Lamborghini.
Ooh, nice.
He would like to design production-like supersport bikes for the world. Adley Dietrich, December Elk Student of the Month.
Okay, we're ready to end the pause and begin the meeting again. The next thing on the agenda is the public open forum. Is there a policy on how we choose?
No.
Okay, where are the? Where are they? Here they are. Okay do, I have two people. And so Sean, do you want to come up?
Sure, would you like to have the podium?
Yep, please.
I would first like to introduce myself to some of you I know and others I do not. My name is Sean Johnson, and I come before you today wearing many hats. I am a parent of three young men, one of whom has a disability. I am also a former parent professional for our district, and currently I am a special education teacher at Falls Elementary School for the last 14 years. Currently, I have 20 students and seven parent professionals that I manage. Six of those parent professionals are assigned to one-on-one duties with specific students on my caseload. Most paras have what I call "in-the-trenches" work right from the get-go. With little to no training, paras are providing behavioral, academic, social-emotional, and self-care supports to our most vulnerable students. If a para is gone due to illness or other reasons, it can truly affect the way our students' days go. Consistency, predictability are the building blocks of our student's success. Currently, we have 11 names on our para sub-list. Some of those listed are only able to work one or two days per week or are only able to work every other week. Our secretaries scramble daily to fill open positions. We are often short-staffed. With that being said, how are we, how are you going to ensure students with disabilities are receiving their behavioral, academic, social-emotional, and self-care supports that they require to be successful if our para union goes on strike? I came before the school board about 10 years ago stating my support of paras and the valuable work that they do for me and our students. I stand before you today with the same belief and the same hope that we can, that this all can be resolved so that our students can be set up for success. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Okay, Kelly, come on down.
It's been a while since I've talked on a microphone, and I'm short. So I think I'm gonna kind of sort of use the podium, is this okay?
Yeah.
You guys gonna be okay? All right. Good evening, school board members. I am Kelly Remus. I know some of you, but I'll introduce myself as well. I am a parent professional at Falls High School. I've worked for the district since 2007, and I actually started as a substitute teacher. And I quickly saw the value of the parent professional's role in the classroom. Once, while reading a teacher's subnotes somewhere in Fallsdale, I remember it was Fallsdale, the teacher wrote something that really made an impression on me then and still does today. The teacher said, "If you have any questions or any problems, just ask the pairs in my room. They know what to do, and they'll help you." And I'll tell you, it wasn't long after that I decided I wanted to be a parent professional. Two years later, I was hired, and I've been working for the district ever since. I'm here tonight to address the process of bargaining a fair contract for myself and my colleagues. Parent professionals play a vital role in every corner of our district, working incredibly hard to provide support and monitor students in special education, and to ensure that these students receive the level of support mandated by their individual education plans. This work includes one-on-one attention in the classroom, some need additional support with behavior management, daily living skills, and ensuring that the curriculum that is being used in the mainstream classroom is accessible to them in a way that they can understand and learn too. We are a critical part of the education team, and we're being undervalued and underpaid. We need to be able to attract and retain staff that are quality, committed to helping students reach their full potential. That's what we really all want. And I believe that's what you all want as well. We deserve a strong professional team being paid a professional wage for our work. Well, we're currently bargaining, as you know, with the district, and we're here tonight to ask you for your support, to show your support for our gullible work by telling the district to please settle a fair contract that values our contribution to education. I believe that what we're asking is fair, and it's relative to the historic investment made by the state into public education with a particular emphasis on special education funding. Our contributions are truly essential to the healthy functioning of the school. And that means from the minute those kids get on the bus, the minute they get to the school grounds, they need help getting into the building for whatever reason, and then the rest of their day until they go home. And we're committed to that, and we would really like your support to show that you are committed with us and for us. We need to work as a team. I mean, that's what it's all about. We want to keep this wonderful staff that we have here in International Falls. Our community deserves it, and our students deserve it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have a total appreciation for paras as well. They're wonderful. I've seen a lot of you work. You're great. Okay, let's move on now, and we are going to go to the committee and administrative reports. Mitch?
All right, for Student Council, we have our holiday dress-up days are going on this week until Friday, the 22nd, with an Ugly Sweater competition happening on Wednesday. All staff is welcome to participate on Wednesday. Wear your ugly sweaters. We decorated the cafeteria and the windows as well to put some holiday spirit inside the school, with a Christmas tree up and just some window decorations by the cafeteria. Winter Sports Week is being planned. That's going to be January around 18 through the 22nd, somewhere around there. We will have two pet fests this year, one for 6th through 8th graders and one through 9th through 12th graders. And then we will resume a big pet fest in the spring for all 6th through 12th grade. Just trying to try it out, let's see how it goes. And, yeah. Oh, if you're wondering, we're having a Hawaiian-themed pet fest. Okay. Kate had a muffin Monday. That was today. They passed out muffins for students, just a little breakfast snack. And then the older kids are also going into 6th through 8th grader classrooms to make posters for alcohol and tobacco awareness. The Honors Society, we had a little kid fundraiser dance that was very successful. Thank you to everyone that came, and especially to the generous who helped clean up the mess that some of those kids made. But we had such a great turnout that we were actually able to give almost 100% discount for our sweatshirts and t-shirts this year for all the honor members. So thank you to everyone who attended there. It was a really good fundraiser. Our next one will be sometime around Valentine's Day, around that week, on that Friday. The Honors Society also decorated doors for the month of December. You can see them around the school if you want to take a look. We had some get really creative, and it's a lot of fun to do that every year. And we also had a hat and midget drive that is still going on. It is for used and new clothing. So if you'd like to donate anything, donations can be dropped off in Mrs. Line's room.
Thanks, Mitch.
Thanks, Mitch.
Okay, Missy, do you have a report?
Yep. Our enrollment's at 456, up two from last month. And then we want to thank PCA for their generous donation to send all of our PK through grade five students to a Christmas movie at 25. So they're paying for them to attend the movie and for treats, and that will happen tomorrow and Wednesday. And we had our Christmas concerts this month. They also did their band concert, an evening concert. And then we just finished our winter season for Fastbridge for reading and math, and we held our winter data meetings already, so we can get a jump on interventions when we return in January. And that was something new that we did this year. Usually we wait until January, but we thought, we wanted to be ready to just get going right away in January and not spend that time testing and having those data meetings. So hopefully that will give us more time for interventions. And then we also have added the SEL component in Fastbridge this year, and that actually helped us identify a few kids that were kind of under the radar to work with Jordan and Chelsea. So that was good. And then our after-school SEL and STEEP clubs continue to go well.
Any questions of Missy? No? Thank you. And Tim, Kevin, you're gonna?
Why don't we close to Beth, and then I'll leave Tim in line?
Yep.
The CAFD had their first Santa. This past month, there were 181 people in attendance. We made a Valentine's Day party in February. Defensive riding had another successful class with 50 people in attendance. The trooper that does the class continues to ask for a gift for people, but it's totally worth trying to pop here. House is a busy month with crafts, movies, exercise classes, and a basketball game. Tomorrow's our annual Christmas party, which we're extremely looking forward to. And then we have a local Santa and Mrs. Claus coming. The pool remains extremely busy. Fort Frances is all closed, and we have a large group that comes over and uses our open swim in the evening. And we have a 5:15 to 2:05 that come over during open swim and use it. And we also have lots of rooms that come in the morning. And again, I said this last month, but they have, they brought in a way to get best with their lifeguards. They are extremely appreciative and cannot say enough good things about the staff down there. So that makes me feel good. Let's see. We just finished up a youth signage class through the end collaboration with 4H. It started out pretty slow, but by the end, it was very successful. She had a very good class in attendance. We had a drivers' training class starting at the end of next month, and we have a water fitness to start next month also. And the employees' rec swimming, we got to start next month also. Kate has been very busy. We've been going into classes this last month. We went into 4th and 5th grades over at FES, and 6th, 7th, and 9th at the Lee High School. And that's always our favorite part of the day, is go through classrooms. And we always do a lesson, help the decision-making. We're doing alcohol this week, and then we try to follow up with a game or something fun.
Okay, thanks, Beth.
Okay, so from Tim, enrollment, this month, 514. It's up one from last month. He's up one 6th grade student, up two 10th grade students, and down two seniors. So far, that took one. Some of this, Mr. Erickson mentioned. So I'll try and hand you it out. The middle-level program is going well. Students have gotten used to the schedule. The 6th or 8th grade level teams have planned and implemented reward activities for the students since the beginning of the school year. He mentions Teacher In-Service Day on January 15. We have Sports Week, which was talked about, and Tim mentioned they're going, you know, that was one of the requests, was to try and do a separate pet fest. They're going to recognize the middle-level activities, just like the high school does. And then the end of quarter two semester one is January 22. So it's coming quick after we come back from break. No specific order here. A couple of things, an update on the referendum. You know, it met with the three union groups. I would say four union groups. We have two behind us at this point that have verbally came and spoke. The Principals Group and Local 331 have not pressured any, you know, the other two, you know, where yet. But the plan is going to be to, at our January meeting, at least know where they're at. And because at that point, I think we need to start, you know, figuring out what we want to do, and if we're going to do something, and when or not, you know, type deal. So just keep me in the loop there. I gave you a copy of a facility agreement, which was asked for last, or something like it was asked for last, or last month. And we would use for, I guess, I'm going to say, a non-financial agreement, because that's really what we have with figure skating and rec hockey at this point. And so as we started, I mean, some of it was, you know, can they, can we hold them to the same level that, you know, our high school athletes are held to? And one of the problems, and I'm just being upfront, is when you run into, how do we manage something like that? I'm not saying you're clunky or there's no way, but technically, like, and I'm just going to pick on grades, before, they were part of us, you know, as a joint powers agreement. We had a commission that had the same. Now they're not. And so technically, we're allowing them to use the arena. I'm going to say at no cost, but I'll talk about that in a minute. And again, this could be rec hockey, it could be figure skating, it could be, you know, if there was another big group like that. So how do you, you know, if we're going to do something like that? We thought about saying, you know, per our handbook, well, our handbook says no activities on Sunday. You know, nothing after certain, so I mean, you start reading certain things, and they can do different things. And a prime example, I'm just going to throw it out there, and it came to me probably two weeks ago, what about our junior high basketball? The coach wanted to have open gym on Sunday. I don't have an issue with it. You know, I mean, it's not required. If they want to come in, and I think they let, it was, it happened to be our daughters group, but it wasn't, Mr. Dowdy was the one that asked. 4th through 6th grade, he said, you know, they have a new parent deal or whatever. I'm going to open the gym if anyone wants to come. Again, it's not against high school league rules.
Right.
So I went, and so Tim Ringhopper and I talked about it. I kind of went, you know, I'm going to throw it out there. I don't have an issue. You know, it's, they're not playing game, I mean, you know, things. But if they want to open it up as time goes on, I don't have an issue with it. And so it's kind of the same thing here. How do we, I think this agreement is good because before, rec hockey and figure skating was part of the rec commission.
Yep.
Now they technically aren't. So what you have is mainly saying they're going to have supervision, you know, you need insurance, which we have copies of their insurance, you know, and outlines that it can be, you know, nullified at any time. You got to take direction from our employees, and everything goes through the AD. That's pretty much what that says. If there's other things you want on it, I guess, you know, I'm open for suggestions. If not, I will meet with both, and just kind of explain, here's, you know, here's what, why we're doing this is technically, we don't have anything right now. You know, other than kind of, this is the way it's been. Well, it's really not the way it's been. It was under a different heap. But I don't think we have like a right if, you know, now if there's something going on, like lack of supervision, or there's, you know, stuff broke, yeah, we have rights. But if someone's complaining about coaching, it's not our deal. You know, and I'm just being honest on what this is saying, or, you know, whatever. So I don't know if that's what the group is thinking, because like I said, we haven't had, and I agree, we should have something now that we're kind of, but I think it was kind of thought that it might be a little different, and we started having, looking at it going, how do you do this?
Right. So does anyone have any input on this?
And again, I don't need an answer. I didn't put it as part of the agenda because I haven't talked to any group, you know, and they really don't, you know, I will talk to them when we get something. And again, I don't see any issue with, you know, why they would object other than, you know, we should have something saying, you're using it. It's for the most part, I'm going to say, non-financial, but on the flip side, just so you're aware, rec hockey is making two donations right now in the ballpark of about $8,000. So I mean, it's, and they do stuff every year for the most part. So on the flip side, I mean, you could in essence kind of say they're renting it. I don't know what it would come out to, we'd have to figure out hourly. But they're paying half of an electric, what, electric edger and half the price of new matting out front to both the boys and girls locker room. And so the other half is coming from advertising money. Both upgrades are, the gas edger still is working, but it's starting to smoke, and the numbers are starting to go up. Not out of compliance, but they happen to be there one day, and how about we did something for you? And we're like, yeah, but again, we wanted, we felt it was better. They were either going to pay for the edger, and then hopefully did something with it. So why don't we go half and, you know, half and half?
Is that something you got in writing? Because I know when they had talked to me, they didn't know what they were going to put it towards at that time, and then?
We had a conversation, Mr. Ringhopper, Mr. Baldwin, and myself on, I think it was Thursday.
Okay.
And because they were, you know, there's a couple of different brands of edger, and they were about $400 a cart, and I'm, you know, through, I think, I think it was Beckerize. I'm not, don't quote me on that. But so we had the conversation, and no, I, as long as it's good and as long as it's high-quality, because that was the matting piece. We went back and forth on thickness and wanted to make sure something's going to hold up.
I just asked, because before they had mentioned sound system.
Yeah, you know, and they're still on board, we're still working. There's another group also involved with that. And that is ongoing too. Everything is going to go through Mr. Holt because, A, we do have a second quote. B, just like this, when they were, said, you got to tell me what you're thinking. You know, if you're thinking $1,000, and we got to come up with, I think, the edger's six or seven. Well, that's different than if you're three or four. You know, and the same with the sound system. Once we say, okay, this is what we're going to go, what is men's hockey, Kerry Park Tournament? You know, what, are you really willing to do? What's rec hockey? What are we? And we'll come back and see if it's a one-year and two-year deal, whatever. You know, so, so in essence, back, I'm open to the conversation if you want more, think you need.
You guys have more questions?
I guess I have one question. So how would it fall?[1791.18] So how would it fall, like I know when I was president of the figure skating club, we had a figure skater get in trouble for drinking. And she got re- reprimanded by Bill and she had to sit out, so we go to hell.
They were part of the rec commission.
So now nothing would happen to them?
Well, I'm hopeful that figure skating or rec hockey has-
Their own rules.
Their own rules, you can manage it, I mean, if you, to be honest, if you called us and said, student A plays, I'm just gonna pick, pick on a pee-weed and they got a smoking. We really don't have, I mean, a right to do it.
No.
And so that's where, and I'm sure, I'm guessing, whatever USA Hockey or something has, and I'm guessing the figure skating also has some criteria. It was just before they were truly part of the rec commission. So Bill had a right when notified and um, grade-wise to um technically enforce that, you know.
Sure.
But now, like it or not, it's kind of like little league, you know?
It's not under our jurisdiction anymore.
No, we, we do certain things, but we don't.
Yeah.
And so.
Anything else over on your side, Tony?
Sorry, we're just talking-
No, I just have to apologize for being late, I had a met error with my sister and it was kind of an emergency, so I got here as soon as I could.
Did, did you get a chance to, um, look over the Bronco arena, Bronco arena?
I did not, no, 'cause it wasn't in the pocket.
Why don't we do this? You have a week, let's, what, let's just say, someone pick a date, I don't know, you know, through this week.
Yeah.
And if anyone wants more time, just let me know, I won't have any conversation.
The twenty-fifth, that wouldn't work.
Well, no, I, I'm just thinking, you know, you got Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I mean, I won't do anything this week, but then over the holiday, you know, the days I work, I will touch base with the presidents of associations if I haven't heard anything. If I hear something and someone has a point that we can resolve-
Yeah, no news is good news.
Right. Yeah. If you don't hear anything, we're good.
Yep, yep, okay, so that's that.
Joanne or Dale, do you guys have anything on that? Okay.
Ju- just kinda running through a couple of things, 'cause some questions come up. Antonio Robinson, someone had a question, sent me an email, um, that was not general fund money. What happened is a group was formed a year ago, half a year ago, whatever, started raising money to do an activity. And so as that went forward, they needed, I'm gonna say a fiscal host. And as long as it, you know, met our criteria, and Rox, you could talk and, you know, and add, we would be willing to do that. Now whether it continues that way or not, um-
Yeah, we have, our, our committee is evolving. And so we're a small committee, we're hoping to get a lot more people on it, and we're also hoping to change the name, and so there's a lot of-
What committee is this?
Well, right now, we call it the Racial Equity Committee.
Okay.
It was formed based on some um issues between races. And so we wanted to get some education going. And, um, but that does, we, we are, we wanna work with um, people that have minority issues and that kinda thing. So whether we become a five oh one C three or lots of other things, we haven't met enough yet. And so we just got one activity under our belt and then we're gonna move, um, hopefully get much more professional.
So, ju- just to answer the question, so there was zero funds, other than if, you know, someone gave us a thousand dollars, technically, once it's given to the district, it's district.
Yeah.
But that group raised-
But they had it earmarked for, yeah, just that.
So.
Makes sense, somebody just asked me.
Yep, no, and, and I'd rather, you know, people ask and-
They put the school name for that and I'm like, I don't know.
Um, if you can, and I'm throwing it out as a question, but typically, the first January, or the first Monday in January, we have our organizational meeting. Okay, the first Monday is, is a holiday, so I guess I'm asking, are we gonna do January eighth? Is, is technically, you know, the first Monday without, um-
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so five fifteen, we will get our organizational meeting set. Um, just so the group is aware, there is a staff breakfast in, I'm gonna say all buildings other than the arena tomorrow, bus garage, as well as here, as well as elementary, the arena, people are invited. Um, if any of you would wanna join, um, we're doing, doing kinda the wellness committee is, is hosting and with help from others, um, on staff. So, um, seven thirty, seven fifteen, I forget what we said, but going till eight thirty. Um, commend the food service, um, staff, um, which includes Carla and Michelle. They went through the food service audit that happens every two or three years. Um, I'm gonna say a couple, I don't know if findings are the right minor things, um, but they were commended on our food service program, which I think says a lot. And as I tried assuring Carla, it's like when the state patrol inspects our vehicles, they're gonna find something.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there was nothing major, I mean, it's as perfect as can be, I think, so, um, hats off to them. Um, getting some questions on seniors last day, and not, not something we really looked at. Typically, you know, they're done the week before, but with us moving to Saturday, the June second, um, I think we need more than them finishing on Friday. We, we're gonna need a day or two to make sure, so we looked up, they need a thousand twenty hours of the minimum requirement. So I guess I'm asking, are you okay if we possibly back up to Wednesday or thir-? You know, depending, we, we gotta pick something and I wanna make sure it's, but, you know, we, we need a day or two or three.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, as long as we meet the, we're gonna do that.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yepers.
Um, just throwing it out, there's um, five board members signed up for MSBA, so we will leave Wednesday, January tenth, three o'clock. I, I just throw, I mean, I'm asking for-
Whatever you say.
Well, no, I-
I, I've never been there, so-
Well, no, it's, it's what time do you wanna get out of here Wednesday, to go down, and typically-
Sometimes people stop and have dinner, some, well, for sure you'll have dinner sometime, but in some peop- times, people wanna go all the way to other stuff, so.
I mean, three, three thirty, four, I mean, I, you guys have-
I mean, is shopping on the agenda, 'cause I'm always up for that.
Typically, typically not that night, um, uh, what do you do or redo Friday, come back or something.
Maybe Friday a little. I'll take a whole day off of work if we're going shopping.
Three o'clock at the bus garage?
That's fine.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, um, just a heads up, um, we're working on, there's new law coming into effect January first, earn safe and sick time, whether you're aware or not. Um, full-time people, um, it's gonna be covered for the most part, myself, teachers, um, five, ten, the paras, they meet the minimum requirements, it's a matter of tracking. Um, the bigger challenge is for the people that are, I'm gonna say, part-time, um, board members and coaches don't qualify, um, unfortunately, so I'm just telling you. But like substitute teachers or substitute paras or, or substitute custodians. And so that's not something we've had to deal with ever, where you track accumulation and then how, so, um, we're working on it, we're, we're gonna-
Yeah, that's gonna be another tracking nightmare.
Anyway, I just, I want, there is a notification that will go out over break to employees and, um, we're gonna, um, struggle through it, just like many other places. Um, and there'll be some glitches and we'll work through them and, um, that's just the way it is. Um, then the one last thing that we have to update, um, twice a year to get S R money, we have to update our COVID protocol, okay? We updated prior to the start of the year, we were on N D H recommendation of if you test positive COVID, you're out five days. When you come back, um, if you test the next two days, you're supposed to be masked, if you had two negative tests, you then can go mask free. Um, the question is, are we gonna go away from that? And I'm just gonna be honest with you, um, the recommendation from your school nurse is, some people, it's getting to be less and less, are being honest about testing.
Yeah.
She would rather, and, and again, I'll get a little more of that, you know, at twenty-four hour fever free is what a lot of places are doing and saying, it's just like any, if you're sick, we don't want you here. You know, um, masks as you so desire, um, and hopefully more would test and know that they have it then. Staff, I think, has been pretty good, the students and families are the ones, and again, there are some that I'm not, you know, trying to cast everyone or paint everyone with the same brush. But, so her request, I did check with a couple of other schools, didn't do a wide swath or anything. St. Louis County, that's kinda their stance, unless they get to a point where there is, I think it's ten percent, but we, we gauge that just like influenza. Where staff, students, if you start having an outbreak, we may have to, you know, look at something. Um, the other one I happened to talk with is Hibbing, um, they're still doing the, the five, um, day, but if you get a negative test, you can come back early. I mean, it's a little different twist, but I guess, I'm gonna recommend we go with what we, uh, is recommending. I mean, we have cases, there's no doubt, but there's also people that, you know, were out three days after a day or so. Maybe they had it three days before, but they felt good in that, you know, tested negative. There's some people that she says will test, uh, positive for up to ninety days or something. So, if you're okay, we will update, 'cause we have to in January to meet the every six months for our S R requirement. Can you always change? You always could.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right.
Let me just check my notes, I think, uh, that is all I have unless someone has questions, sorry.
Okay, we move on to the consent agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll move.
Dale, second?
Second.
Okay, Bruce? Uh, all those in favor, or discussing, sir?
I don't have much more comments, um, majority of the policies are, um, the required annual update, there, there's, there's not much in. Um, the, the one comment on number twelve, just so you're aware, our, like, our hoist, which lift the baskets up and down, they get inspected every so often. They no longer meet requirement. And so unfortunately, it's time to update them, and so that's where that's coming from. Um, and like I said, with number twenty-one, I am support, in support, we have a person that, um, you all know, and is wanting to work as long as, yeah. Um, but I just wanted that comment, or the, like I said, it became full-time or sign at some point.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
So.
Is the hoist still working?
What's that?
It just needs, is the hoist still working though, so it just needs upgrades?
What, what happened, there are all of them, there's like, are there six baskets in the gym?
Yeah.
Those hoists are out of compliance now, they, and they need some upgrade, and so that's like-
But she was wondering, are they still working?
Oh, yeah, they're still going, but they're, they're out of what I'm called compliance, they need to be fixed, so there's a quote there.
Okay.
And I'm not sure, I didn't look at it, said when they're getting, but they're gonna give them updated. Just like our bleachers get inspected, all these different things, and those just happened to, it's time for some upgrades.
Okey-dokey, is that it, Kevin?
Yep.
Thank you, and now let's move to the action item.
No, we need to vote, sorry.
Oh, see. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Um, now we're on the action items for, you know, the, number one, improving, under the, uh, category of improving systems and structures to create a culture where all are welcome and supported. Could I have a motion to approve the resolution acceptance of gifts and donations?
Um, hold a second.
Okay, and now I'll read it. Whereas school board policy seven oh six establishes the guidelines for acceptance of gifts or donations to the district, whereas the International Falls School Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts, gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district, whereas Minnesota statute four six five point zero three states that the school board may accept a gift, grant or devise of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the school board of the International Falls Public School, I S D three six one accepts with appreciation of following gifts, donations or grants received by the school district. Um, and, so now on the name of Bronco, Bronco swim boosters, charter bus share, a hundred and seventy-one dollars sixty-five cents. Bronco football boosters, charter bus share for three games, jerseys for twenty-four, twenty-five season and four new helmets for twenty-four, twenty-five season. Oh, they're all different, okay, let me read them. Two thousand four to thirteen dollars and three cents, one thousand dollars and two thousand dollars respectively. The Rainy Lake Medical Center touchdowns and turnovers, one thousand dollars. Bronco hawk- hockey boosters, charter bus, one thousand two hundred eighty dollars, H U D L, five hundred dollars. In memory of Wade Hughes Whitbeck, industrial arts donation, one thousand eighty-five dollars. Arena scoreboard sponsorship, Minnesota Power, a thousand dollars, chocolate moose, five hundred dollars, midco, five hundred dollars, Super One Foods, one thousand five hundred dollars, P C A, two thousand dollars, and Voyager Park Lodge, one thousand dollars. Okay, now, gotta go back to my paper here. Okay, um, does anyone have any discussion about that?
I just wanted to make one comment, the, um, football boosters doing their, or the Rainy Lake Medical Center touchdowns and turnovers. The football team, I saw they raised over seven thousand dollars.
Nice.
Really?
Wow.
For touchdowns and turnovers, that they donate back to the community.
Holy cats.
I thought that was awesome.
That's amazing.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Wow.
Again, thank you to all donors, obviously.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay, all those in-
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
'Cause I, I don't see it on here, maybe it's something different, but I note that there's names on the Zamboni, are those different than the sponsorship?
So what happens is, it really depends on when they come in, you, you know, it is different, there's all kinds of, and, and it's expanded over the last, I don't know, five years or whatever. There used to be the scoreboard, for the most part, and, and Tom and Barb are the two that take care of it, but there's different prices or levels depending on how big on the scoreboard. Well, then it went to kind of, um, on ice, you know, they saw somewhere, and so there are four spots. Again, there were also spots on the Zamboni, the Zamboni used to be the big, you know, the most P R publicity. I think there's three, is it on the top and one on each side or whatever? Well, as things evolved, now there's four big spots on the ice, well, then it went to, is it in the box and on the boards or just on the boards? Okay, you know, that, that became, so we've lost, we've lost some on the scoreboard, but we have more people advertising. And so we, they got, I think, two more for the boards last week, and so those are on order, um, to get, you know, produced and, and so, um, it's when they come in is when you're gonna see them on here, um, as far as receiving the donation, um.
I think to Tony's point, we were talking before and she had mentioned about somebody asking her how much it was to donate to get the board spot. If we could, like, put that out there, even on the website or something, hey, if you wanna panel on the boards, it's X number of dollars. 'Cause I think there's a lot of people out there that don't know they can do that.
Well, that's why it has to go out the steps, the risers, to be able to add something to it at a smaller price.
Right, yeah.
People could just add that in the back.
Right.
I was gonna message Tim and, um, Barb about that too, I have it in my notes, but-
And we can get something put together, you know, there's other things that come up from time to time, you know, what about doing X in the gym or, or in different places? And the only thing you gotta be careful is that you, I'm gonna say, or we do things that are cost, you know, um, and I'll give an example. They wanted to do four by eight, like sheets on the, on, or banners on the, um, fence for baseball.
Oh, sure.
Well, the problem was, you had people put significant money in that scoreboard, like three thousand dollars, you, you know, to get, not a hu-
Yeah, yeah.
And so if all of a sudden they were, I don't know, don't quote me, a hundred bucks a year or something to put this four by, what do you use, that kinda slaps those people, because it's a bigger advertisement. And, and so it's kinda figuring out how do you do things that you don't shoot yourself in the foot, so that when you need to replace the scoreboard, we don't have anyone that wants to throw money in there. So it never win anywhere, not saying it can't, but I just, when the group came, said that's one thing we gotta keep in mind here, is, you know.
Well, I think if we did that for each sport, or, you know, event as well, and had something written up where they could kind of look at their sponsorship member, maybe that would help.
Yeah, I mean, the, the arena is the main, you, you know, place that we have, I'm gonna say major, other than the scoreboards in which they donate and-
Right. And then you bank that money for thing, for repairs in that facility.
Well, for the most part, no, that money goes to pay for, like, like the football scoreboard, the money paid for that whole scoreboard. The one out here, it paid, you know, we, we also have about the same, like the one out here, three thousand, I think, or something in it, along with the others, but, um, covers that. And then we'll keep their names up, in fact, there's one they're replacing, I think, out there that's faded, you know, we'll keep it up.
Make them look nice.
Yeah, keep them to look, or maybe it's down there, um, one of them, there's one that needs some uplift, facelift, it's faded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And now we're going to resolution B, one B, resolution establishing combined polling places. So, the resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. And then if, w- w- we have that in front of us, so if, if you are willing to approve that as presented, the, uh, combined polling place is International Falls Center Ward, Bob Walls Memorial Union Hall, five oh nine Third Street, I Falls, Minnesota, five six six four nine. And this one, we need a roll call vote, okay?
So we should technically have a motion in a second.
Didn't I get a motion, motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, and now a roll call vote.
Aye.
Jessica says aye, Tina?
Aye.
Bruce? Me, Rox, aye. Dale?
Aye.
Joanne?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Although, okay, now I don't have to do all those in favor. You got, do you need anything else for that one, Kevin? Okay, good. And now we go on to- And now we go on to. Approve, okay, for 1C, approve the 12.18.23 at will schedule. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion for discussion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Bruce, second, discussion.
So.
Go ahead.
Okay, what I was gonna state is the, 1C is the at will position, is what is recommended by the Administrative Committee. If you look at the part-time positions, I'm gonna say page two or the back of the first two, most of them are a 4% and a 3%. There are a few that have larger increases based on the committee, for instance, I'm just gonna pick on, subpar professional 1414 to 1576, it's more than a 4%. The sub custodian, again, it's not as much as a regular custodian makes, but it was getting them in the ballpark more. The rest are for the most part 4% and 3%. When you go on bus drivers, on page three, that was taken care of earlier, so there's no adjustment there. The other positions as you go through are a 4% and 3% all the way through. The full-time people, there are a few adjustments, just like you have with 510 and some of the other contracts, like Juneteenth is a legal holiday now. There was an adjustment, a slight adjustment to single and family insurance, like we had, we did with 510 and the proposed with 4798. And, is there anything else those view? But for the most part, it's trying to stay consistent with the 4 and the 3. It is not the adjustments based on, you know, CECL recommendation, which would be the next piece. So this would be the 4 and the 3.
Okay, and this, our, our three-person committee did not work on that piece, right?
Did not work on what the, no, this did come from.
This, oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were gonna look at something else, okay. So, I would like to first have the three-person committee discuss what they have come up with. I mean, they did discuss it before, but I'd like them to have first input.
We, we're talking about 1C?
Yep.
Yep, 1C.
So the handout that you have.
Would you mind putting the microphone?
But now that, that's gonna be 1D.
Yeah.
Oh, so 1C is just, oh, the first.
Just the 4 and the 3 for the most part of.
But it has these other ones, but we're doing them separate.
No, those would be 4 and 3, as we talked about, so if nothing else happened, it's.
Just, would you speak into the microphone?
Across the board, okay, got it, got it, sorry.
And, and so that's what 1C is.
Okay.
Now, do you guys have any input, the three-person committee have any input on that? Anything to say? Now we're gonna move down the table.
First, is, does the committee still believe that 4 and 3 is fair and affordable?
Yeah.
I would say yes, yeah.
It's comparable with, with the unions, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, down the table. Tina?
I'm, I'm good with the ones.
Jessica?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm good with this.
Okay.
Cause it's just the 4 and 3, right? I wanna make sure we're.
Correct, other than, like I say, I wanna point out that on some of those part, you know, there were a few that.
That's not what I thought, yeah, but yeah.
Otherwise.
Yeah, no, this one.
Okay, oh, I lost my agenda.
Like I say, pointing out that the bus drivers we dealt with, you know, so that isn't 4 and 3, you know, that's what we agreed to in June or whenever.
Okay, so now we're going to make, all those in favor and, and that on 1C, then we're gonna move on to 1D, right? Okay, so, all those in favor of 1C?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Now we're going to move on to 1D, Accept The Administrative Committee Recommendations Based On CECL Compensation Study Dated 10/12/23, For Step 1 Wage Adjustments For: A, District Business Office Clerk Position To $22.13 Per Hour; B, Payroll Benefits Coordinator Position To $27.88 Per Hour; C, Business Manager Position To $80,000; And D, Technology Assistant Position To $25.48 Per Hour. Could I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Second. Okay, now we're going to have, I would assume, some discussion here. So, I'm gonna have the committee first speak. And tell us what page you're looking at if you're gonna talk.
Okay, so the, the 1D chart, table, whatever, this is what I sent out to you guys, probably a week or so, maybe more than that ago. So, we just met and we wanted to be clear on what each step was, what each piece was, and how they looked as a whole. So some notes are, each step is two years. So, and then each step is a 4% increase. And that has been a standard in the past comparable to other contracts. And then, what we did was, I, with Kevin's help, did switch the hourly wages and converted them to approximate salary wages to show what the overall salary was. Cause I think that's easier for us to look at and understand versus per hour, what does that really translate into for a yearly wage?
Yes.
So, the full-time is based on the 2080 hours. And so the District Business Office Clerk, that's hourly position. And then, the CECL recommended 35 to 45,000 as a target where you, where you should be. Current salary is in grade levels, so right now it's approximately 43,000 at full-time, and that's at a level one position. So, level one starting salary, so part-time, is 1550 hours, and that's about 32,000. And currently the position is full-time because we have that person doing more at this point. So, they're around 43,000. And again then, a recommended salary at level one was the 34,000 part-time, which is $22.15 an hour. And then, so comparing that, the salary increase at that same level would be around $33,000 at part-time for level one. Is there any?
And the other piece with that 22.15, that is starting secretary wage. That was another part of the conversation, that, you know, if you go less than that, I mean, you're, it's hard to justify.
Kind of ridiculous.
Well, no, it's just hard to, you know, argue that, you know, not, I'm not saying it does the exact same thing as a secretary, but.
And so, yeah, we assume, and I put the assumption, we'll assume the position is gonna stay at full-time until we can meet all the staffing needs of the office, and then we just later will go back to part-time as that allows. So, that's why there's kind of two different, there's a part-time and a full-time piece on that one. Do we wanna just?
Keep going unless someone says anything?
Or do we wanna talk about this one?
Raise your hand when you wanna, what do you wanna do?
Do you wanna talk about each one individually, or just go through all of it and then talk about all of them as a whole?
Let's talk about each one of them individually.
Okay.
Yep.
So, the District Business Office Clerk, no.
So can I just ask a question?
About that one?
Yeah, well, in general, about the whole thing. So, this is basically the same thing we looked at last time. Right, same numbers? Like you didn't change the numbers?
The, no.
You didn't change the numbers?
Nothing changed, but we just, I did it out as far as like salary versus hourly. And then I, just explaining.
Right.
What went into each piece and how all that. So basically, this is just detailing it out more, so that we all were on the same page and could understand what each piece entailed and what it meant when we said a certain percent.
Sure.
If it 4% or, cause even me in my mind, I'm like, okay, what does that really mean?
Yep. So, so what, we just approved the 4% increases for this, these positions.
Right, so that would be that last column.
Right.
Yep.
But what, what we're saying then with this, if we go through and approve this, then we're basically making that null and void, and going to adopt this going forward.
No, this is addressing from that CECL study.
I, I understand that.
But it's not nullifying, you know, there's a lot more than four positions in here, you know, there's all the.
No, I know, but for the positions in question?
Yeah.
It's basically saying.
You're not gonna get the 4%.
You're not gonna do the 4%, you're gonna get this.
Correct.
Okay, this is what we need to talk about.
Okay.
Can I?
Is there more on that stuff?
Yeah, can I just share? So based on this, just so I could understand it in my brain, cause I need things in writing, I took the liberty of putting, the three positions, I didn't do the payroll position, cause it's not existing right now. And we, that's a whole nother subject, I think. But I did each of these positions, and I extrapolated it out. At level one, here's what the salary would be based on what you have on here. And then level one times 4%, cause we said 4% increase was about the average every year, right? And then what it would be at level two, what it would be at level three, what it would be at level four. And then for each position, I said what their proposed raises, cause we know currently the people that are in these positions aren't at level one, okay? Two of them are at level six, one's at level two. So.
Except for, wouldn't it always be, it's not always gonna be 4 and 3%? That's, no.
No, that's what's proposed.
That's what I just used, I just used 4% for sake of argument.
All right.
Okay, so this might not be exact, but it's close. So, we've got, I've got here the proposed raise for each position based on where they are right now in the years or levels, okay?
And what year did you start with?
So, let's just go the, the office clerk. So let's just go with the office clerk one, let's go down that one.
Okay, so here, I'm gonna pass these down.
I thought you were going from past and.
No, 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 this is not past, no, this is what you're proposing. So we just approved the 4% increase for the office clerk, which would put them full-time around 44720. Okay? But what you're saying is if we go by this, and that person is currently at level six, they're gonna go from 43,000 up to 56,000, 05363, which is really a 23% increase.
But, the 44,700 isn't a level six, the, the person is not on level six. If you wanna compare a person on level six currently, we would have to calculate what it would be.
It said on that sheet that the office person is currently at level six.
No, they're at level one.
The office clerk person is at level one?
That's what this one says.
Okay, still, okay, so, so then, looking at this, they're still gonna go from 43,000 to 4791488, which is, I've got my handy calculator here, cause I don't do math in my head. So they're at level two? 47914.
It's a level one.
So, that's an 11% increase. Is it level one or is it?
No, okay, so currently, that person, because they're working full-time hours, is getting 43,000.
Right.
If we did the, the raise that we were looking at, they would go to 46. So that's about $3,000.
They're at level one or level two?
At level one.
At level one.
Oh, okay, level one, okay. So then what's the?
So you're saying they go to 46,000 plus get the 4%?
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
That's with us with it, okay.
That's where they would be year two though.
It's still 7%.
No, year two they would get a 3%.
Then they would get a 3%, so the first year, they would get that $3,000 raise, we'll say.
7%.
And then the next year, they would just get three like everybody else. So the 7% is the adjustment, so it's a 3% adjustment, if that's.
Three additional percent.
Right.
And it depends on how you wanna look at it, I mean, if you don't do anything, they're at 447, and I don't know if that's the number you, it depends on how you wanna look at it.
Yeah, 44720, yeah.
Okay, so then they would go to 44,700 to 46.
Based on what we just passed.
So about $2,000, but more.
Seven percent from where they are right now. Okay? So then, do you wanna look at the?
No, wait a minute, let's see, no, we're going back to the next position, cause yours is on.
Yep.
Well, I guess, do we, do we wanna have more discussion about this? Like, is, do we feel that that is fair? Because, well, and guess, we're looking at, so they recommended was 35 to 45. Granted, I believe that was the part-time, right? So that's why I put the part-time numbers in there, so, right, if it was part-time, it would be 32,000. And then we would look at moving it to 34, which is just under the recommended range.
And this is the one that we'll go back to part-time?
The, the idea.
Once it's all caught up and not so normal.
Right.
So then I'll go down. Okay, and I don't know if we, I think the, I don't know that we wanna have any more discussion than that. We want to first go through all of them, then we were gonna have an overall discussion, I think was what our plan was.
Correct.
Okay, go ahead, Joanne.
All right. So the payroll benefits coordinator, that one is another hourly one again, so it's looking at full-time, using same out, same amount of hours. Recommended range was 55 to 65,000. Right now, we're contracting out the position at 60,000 for two days of work.
And the recommended salary range was for five days, 55 to 65.
Right.
Okay.
That's a full-time position. So this position started at 43,000, it was increased in January to 48,000 because we couldn't fill the position. So when we went out and couldn't find anybody, then we raised it, went out again, tried to find somebody hopefully, and still didn't find anybody, so that's why we went to the contracting out of that position.
For 60,000.
Right.
So what's the recommendation on this one, 58,000?
She hasn't got there yet.
Yeah, yeah, so 58, this would allow to have five days worth of work versus two days at 60K, so.
58,000 at five days versus two days at 60,000.
Right.
But, but do keep in mind, there are additional costs.
Right.
With a whole time.
Well, so just saying.
You have benefits.
You add 30%, you're at 75,000.
But the point being is we get five days of work.
Versus two.
Cause for instance, right now, and I'm just, just so we're all on board, in the past, you know, that did payroll, what? Sorry. Did payroll, it does insurance, it does all the onboarding, it does, you know, your, all your tax stuff now at the end of the year. The payroll right now, people are doing the computation, it takes, I'm gonna say, our office, Kendra does a lot of the chasing of getting all forms, getting them to them, you know, chasing people to get things taken care of. Stace goes through and directs probably two days a week worth of stuff to help this person crunch it for two days. We used to say payroll is one week, and then there was another week when you're not doing payroll, and for the most part doing, you know, insurance, you know, star report, which is all the licensing. It does a bucket full of stuff. Right now, we're getting part of the process.
Right.
And so, I, I want it out there that the goal is to hire a position, get it back in-house, get rid of, and again, it's just a part of, it's not going well, there's been mistakes in every payroll. And last week, we ran into more issues, and at, at a point, it's more work.
Fix everything.
But yet.
People that are in here trying to cover up all those mistakes.
So I mean, there's no doubt, it's not, it's gonna cost more than, you know, for the 60 that you're paying, meaning the contractor, it's gonna cost more than that, just like if we hire, you know, a custodian at 40,000 or 45, it costs more than 45. You know, it depends if they take insurance, it depends, you know, the taxes, PRA.
But all these positions have that same thing in common, right? Okay. Move on.
So then, so currently what we already voted was that it would move to 50,000 at level one.
Fifty, okay.
At level one, okay. Now, let's see, your chart, Jessica.
I didn't include that one because it's a non-existent position right now, so I thought.
Well, it's there, it's just online. It's still there.
It's not a current position that, like, we're paying for benefits and paying someone to do their work, we're paying an outside source. But I have a suggestion for that too, but keep going.
Okay.
Okay, so then, the next one, so the business manager, that's salary, so we don't have to do any calculations there. The recommended range was 85 to 135,000. And currently, so this is where the level six comes in. And they're at 79, and then, level one would be 65,000. And then, if we hired someone at level one, then, so the recommended salary was 80. And then, if we hired someone, um, at level one, then, so the recommended salary was, um, eighty at level one.
If we hired.
If we hired. And then, the, so the four percent, um, is then we would go from the sixty-five to the sixty-seven at level one, and then it would be the eighty-two at level six.
Okay, so I took, on my sheet, I took your recommended salary at level one, because that's what you're recommending to us. That's what I started my grid with. So I started the office manager schedule at eighty thousand for level one. Does that sound appropriate?
Yep.
Okay. Currently, with the four percent raise that we just approved, that's gonna go up to eighty-two, one sixty, okay? However, based on what you guys are proposing here, if we start level one at eighty thousand, and you can see it's all out here in black and white, the percentages and how much is included each time. At level six, that position is at ninety-seven, three, thirty-two, twenty-three, which is a raise of eighteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-three cents, or nineteen percent.
And that's what you guys are recommending?
And that's what you're recommending?
Yes. Well, you know, you can look at it as a raise, or you can look at it as what the position, huh, an adjustment to what the salary should be.
It should be. I mean, that's open, that's a very subjective.
Well, in, in, uh, in terms of, of, um.
It's not subjective if you have a study done.
Sure, it is subjective. Every study, I mean, if you've ever taken any statistics class, any statistic can be skewed the way you want it to be based on how you set it up.
Except for a study isn't skewed like that. I don't believe a study would be. Then we couldn't base anything, we couldn't even base reading levels or reading scores if we don't trust our statistics.
Well, you could argue anything.
Yeah.
Well, and that's why, that's why the range is eighty-five to a hundred and thirty, I mean, that's a big range, that's a huge range. So that is another thing that you, you know, need to take into account too.
Okay, but the biggest thing we need to take into account is that as a school district, we cannot afford that kind of a raise for one person. And we are still bargaining with a, with a bargaining, or we're still in negotiations with the bargaining unit, telling them that we can't do what they want us to do. I, 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 I don't see how this, I mean, I, in my mind, it's not even, it's not even a question.
I agree.
It's, it, open the checkbook, okay? The balance is not there to cover this kinda money, especially for one person. Also, I wanted to ask, are we governed in any way, or is there a recommendation out there in any way of how much of the school's budget should be allocated to administrative staff?
The, the audit does each year talk about, and they look, I don't have a copy of the audit with, in the back of, you know, the different positions, um, percentages you should be. We, we have been in line in the past, and again, I wanna say it's four to six percent administrative, and it, you know, they have the different groups. Actually, if you look on the back of your levy sheet, it somewhat gets into, it, you know, some of this that, um, you know, the auditors will talk about, you know, because that's a question we always, are we in line?
Yeah.
And again, some of it does depend on, you know, where you put, you know, different groups and different people, because, you know, um.
Again, it can be skewed based on where you put it, yeah.
Correct, you, you know, and, and so, there are recommendations, and, and again, um, smaller, bigger, it becomes harder, because, you know, our people, you know, do several things, you know, and so, you don't just have a, if, uh, let's just leave it there.
And then, um, I guess I would like to just, you know, I tried to, I've, I asked how much the raise, and, um, as a teacher, I love teachers, and I love Paris, and, um, I support everybody that I, I, I really think the whole school works really wonderfully together, and I support everyone, but when, and not but, but, and, when we look at teachers raises, it was two hundred and twenty-six thousand, um, you know, that was two hundred and twenty-six thousand just for the raises. And so, you know, we spend money from, we spend money, and if we end up having to hire a new position, we're going to have to hire it at ninety-seven. I think we kinda learned our lesson when it came to having to hire for the payroll. We ended up saying, no, 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 and then we end up paying sixty thousand and not being able to get, um, five days' worth of work out of them. And so I think the labor force is what it is. It forces us to pay for what we need. And if we don't have payroll, or if we don't have a business office, we're going to end up caving, you know, we're just have to have. And, and you can look at and say, I don't wanna pay that. Well, there's a lot of things I don't wanna pay either, you know, there are a lot of bills I don't wanna pay. And just because we say it's, um, it's, that's the going rate, some people say, I don't care, I don't wanna pay the going rate, well then what are you gonna do? You gotta either pay it or lose it.
Well, there's a lot of things I could say to that, okay? But the first thing I wanna say is, it doesn't matter what I wanna pay anybody. I would love to give everybody a raise, okay? The bottom line here is, we have a fiscal responsibility to the district and to the kids to manage the money. And the money is not there for this kind of raise.
And we have a responsibility to keep the school running as well.
The school will keep running. If you don't give one person this raise, the school's not gonna come to a screeching halt.
If you don't have a business manager, we're gonna have to hire one. And if we're gonna have to hire one, we're, it's gonna be the same thing that we tried to hire for the other positions. Are you kidding me?
Yes, I, no, I'm not kidding you, it's not gonna be.
Why do you feel it's not?
Because there are other issues other than just how much the position was paid.
What?
Let's, let's go back to the, and, and again, let's go back to the payroll one. You, you know, it's the same question, is, we need to do something. And, and I'm just gonna use the example that we need some help.
Okay, so I have a suggestion. I had somebody in the community come to me and say that a few years ago, a company called ADP had come in and had meetings with Stacy and talked to the, her, about the services they offer. They do it specifically for school districts, other businesses as well. Uh, they do benefits, HR, time cards, payroll, all that kinda stuff. And they had provided sort of a, not an official quote for our needs, but it was around forty thousand dollars. So I, what I'm saying is, why aren't we looking at a solution like that?
How many, when, when was that, a few years ago? Do you know how much salaries have cha- or wages pay has changed in two years?
Yes, I do.
It is a lot, a big difference.
I understand that, okay.
But, and, and in essence, that's what we're doing with the company that we have.
Right.
We opened it up for payroll service to take quotes.
Right.
And again, got what we got.
But we're doing a lot of manual things that I think we could automate with a company like AD. I was on their website today, they have some cool stuff. Some very, um, hands-off, like, eh, entry, new employee onboarding, they'll do, and it's a matter of entering three fields and it's in there. And you have access to reporting, and, you know, your representative, and whatever. I mean, I just, and I, I just think it's worth exploring. There's so many things that we're doing manually, and having this many people in the business office, when I don't think we need to.
And again, I can't speak to ADP, you know, CISO, um, does the same type thing. They were a small bit cheaper. We didn't, they didn't bid when we were put in a price, when we went out looking for someone. But again, they're in the same ballpark of where we're at, a little bit cheaper, so a long-term solution if, but again, they understand the same thing. We're gonna pay more than what we're paying now if you cover all the services. You know, that, that was their comment. You know, right now, we're, we're getting the payroll calculated.
It's worth getting a quote though. It's worth asking what the services are, what they can offer us, and getting the quote. Because until you know for sure and you have it in writing, you don't know.
Correct.
Other people can say it's hard.
Conversations when they were here doing the analysis.
Yeah, for theirs, yeah.
And looking at going, what happens if you took on the onboarding, you took on the health insurance, you took on, and it was gonna be significantly higher than where we're at, but we don't have that right now.
No.
So, again, going back to looking at raising the rate for this position to try and get a local body in here five days a week. I think it is money well-spent, because I think we're gonna pay all of that or more to do the full job.
And I, uh, just a minute. It, so, because this is such a specific position, and I think we have to get some input from the person doing the position. Is there, uh, anything against me asking for Stacy to give some input on this? Stacy, are, are we running down the wrong path here, or what do we?
No, um, regarding Jessica's comment about ADP, um, the young gentleman that's done this, who approached me.
Yep.
What you don't understand is you can't cut the Skyward system.
I know, he mentioned that.
Uh, let, let Stacy, or, uh, stay, I'd just like to hear from Stacy.
It's, it, it doesn't replace Skyward, so it would exist outside, so you would have to add board members if I did run more, and I don't remember the quote after, let's say the quote for like sixty thousand. So obviously, your teacher's been bending your ear about that, um, which I don't, you know, if you have an issue or a question about my office, don't worry about me.
I didn't go to anybody, they came to me.
No, 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 I'm gonna have to watch this conversation carefully. We're gonna have to take turns.
The problem is, is they're leading you down the wrong path. You're making the assumption that we can just go to ADP for sixty thousand. We, there's only three software vendors in the state of Minnesota that are required. Skyward's one, the art region is another, and then one other. So whether we have an ADP or not, which I would love an ADP, we never dream of asking for it because it's an addition to the current software system. It exists outside. That doesn't mean, mean it's any easier, because somebody still has to maintain it, somebody still has to get the data. Then you have to get all of that data back in and coded to our coding structure. Do you know where our coding structure is? Do you understand how that works from the state system?
Definitely.
That is, so what, how does that benefit us?
Stacy, I don't know, because I, all I know is a high level, what I was told, and I wanted to bring it up as an option. I think it's worth exploring. I'm not trying to shove it down anybody's throat, or say it's better than what we're doing now, but it's worth exploring.
And I explored it, and determined it's not a viable option.
Because it was, why wasn't it viable? Because it was.
It's an additional cost. It's a cost that we don't have right now.
We're paying sixty thousand additional right now to have somebody do our payroll, so what's the difference?
That's not anything, that's onboarding and anything else. We don't do any onboarding, we don't do any of those things. So, and it's because we don't have the, the ability, the staffing to do it.
Well, I, I would, I, as a board member, I would like to see what they do and how much it would be.
That's, that's a good suggestion, mm-hmm.
Okay, um, now, where are we at with our discussion here? We're, um, I think we need to start back at this end of the table, we keep going over to this end. Let's hear some more from this end.
So, let's move to technology assistant. Um, that one, again, is another hourly, um, position, so um, salary recommended range fifty to sixty, um, at level two, fifty thousand currently. Um, level one, starting salary is forty-eight, um, recommended to go to fifty-three. Um, and then, that would be with the four percent, fifty at level one, fifty-two at level two.
So I did the same thing with this one that we did, so it's fifty, fifty thousand, one seventy, and then times for what we just approved, puts that person at fifty-two, one seventy-six, eighty. Um, and then I started again with your recommended, right, fifty-three thousand, and extrapolated out at four percent. This person is only at level two. So at level two, it's fifty-five, one twenty, which is a raise of four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars or nine percent.
Okay. So it's an increase of five pers- five percent approximately from the recommend, from what they're, they would get at the four percent.
Yes.
Okay. All right, is there a discussion on that part, anyone?
I mean, it's pretty, it's similar to everything else that we talked about, so.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
And I think we were just trying to get the recommendation salary range caught up, so we could get caught up a little bit in one small section here.
Right.
Versus the whole, you know?
And I guess, look, my, I have, another question would be, is, do we catch up in one year? Or do we look at small increments over multiple years?
Yeah.
As, as, ju- just, you know, throwing it out there, so instead of, for example, like the technology assistant, instead of doing the nine percent, um, do the, you know, do a six percent, or, you know, just, I'm just throwing out a percent. So it would only be, it would be a little more, obviously, two percent more than what we've already said, and it would be less than the proposed. But it at least would be a step in the direction of being in that recommended range that other technology assistants are getting that are comparable.
Okay, now, we're only gonna talk about the technology assistant. Is there more, more talk on any end of the table on that part? Okay.
The only struggle, the thing, the part that I struggle with is the message that we're sending.
Yep.
Okay, um, if we're saying that we can, be- because it was recommended that these positions should be caught up to snuff, so to speak, not to say that they're, they don't deserve it again, and, and we, we just have a group that was in here, a pair of professionals, that also need a fair catch-up-to-snuff reward. What message are we sending?
Yep.
Yep, hundred percent.
And then, on, on.
So when we look, sorry, Rox, when we look at the salary range of Paris around, you know, Minnesota semi-locally, like, not local, obviously, but, um, I mean, have, have you guys looked at any of that?
Which we did, they brought in, and that.
And are we way out of balance? I mean, when we're looking to.
Yeah.
Well, for the most part, we made, and again, with the tentative contract, we made great strides, and for the most part, I'm gonna.
And I think that's what we're trying to do, is just pull little pieces when we can, and try to get caught up here and there, and I know it's not gonna be fair to everybody this time, but hopefully we can keep working on this and get everybody caught up.
Right, and that was the same with like the, with the Paris con- contract that we did have previously, or say, that we were tentatively agreeing on, is, we were not doing the whole kit and kaboodle. We were doing step, and then a step the next year, and then we would look at with the next contract, okay, now we're gonna move another step and another step, you know, so slowly get it into where, you know, we need to be.
Yeah.
As a fair, you know, because obviously, we can't afford going from here to here.
Right.
So, we're looking at, and that's why, that's, I guess, why I was kinda proposing the, can we do this in steps? Just like we would propose to the pair group.
It is not unheard of, y- you know, like with five, ten, we moved four people, three positions, you know, more, and I don't have it in front of me. You know, there are other things that we've made choices on, bus drivers, you know, we went more than, we, we did what we thought we had to, I'm gonna say, retain. You know, attract, retain. It wasn't exactly the same as maybe neighboring, but it was bulging. We did some of the similar with your athletic director. We went seventy-five thousand when we had fifty thousand dollar applicants, you know.
So that was a difference of twenty-five thousand.
To take a quality candidate, and, and again, I support it, but we could've gotten, you know, for significantly less. And not saying they would've been a bad candidate.
And that was.
Now, if not, that person still would've been here, but someone else would not probably have been teaching similar pay. So I mean, it, it is a true statement that it was, we started at fifty, and went up to seventy-six or something, seventy-five, seventy-six.
And that was just this last year.
I don't know, it was last summer or when.
Just, yeah, just this last summer. I didn't even realize that.
Well, but it, it was part of the, so, as far as moving people, we have made adjustments. And again, um, the only other thing I would say, you know, to this, and, and Rox and I were on a conversation, and it goes back to the conversation of splitting them out. I was not aware last month that years ago, the at-will was separate, and it was recommended to bring it together as a group, because there were some arbitrary things happening. So that's how this came about before my time here, sitting here, but I was in the district.
To give us a better plan.
But then the other thing is, we were on a conversation, I'm just throwing it out there, with our attorney on a different issue this week, Rox was in with me. And when that conversation was over, we asked about this, what is your recommendation? You know, should we break these four out? And her recommendation is not, either you go by something and support all four, you know, on a basis, or you don't do any of them, because otherwise, you're setting yourself up for, and I'm just gonna pick on, why did you give, you know, the tech person here? And you didn't give, I'm just picking on the district officer, because for the most part, we took that study, and went on the low end of their, you know, range, and actually below on the business because of where the top end got to. Started at eighty instead of eighty-five. So I'm just throwing out there what the, and, and again, you can talk to a different attorney, and they might give you different advice. But that was her, Rox, my correct, recommendation that, you know, if you're gonna go, don't break them apart. Either don't support any of them, and go back to the table, or support them all, unless, you know, or do something different. But when you start picking and choosing, you open yourself up for what's the analysis. And, yeah, some are higher percentages, different than bus drivers are higher, you know, we talked to her about, than, cause some of the custodians are, you know, wise. There have been different, you know, percentages, so, um, I throw that out just for whatever it's worth, you know.
Okay, now, I know we could go on forever on this.
Well, I, can I just say?
Yeah, absolutely, just a minute though.
Okay. Okay.
So, um, uh, let's see, we've got, is there any more that the committee wants to say?
Not this time, no.
Dale?
Uh, the only answer is, is, uh, you know, percentages can be deceiving, you know, um, you know, math is, is complex, and you can look numbers, as you know, and, uh, if you wanted to look better, you might look at a percentage, or if you'd want to look less, you might look at absolutes.
I got both on here.
Yeah. So anyway, um, I think we should go ahead and, and not do steps, but do it all at once, get it done, and, um, you know, if, if we're back here next year, because things, you know, keep going up, wages keep rising, we'll have to do it again.
So you're support, you're supportive of a nineteen percent increase for one person?
I'm, I'm supportive of what the committee recommended, yes.
Okay, now, let's see, anybody else on this committee? Okay. Okidok, Bruce, do you have any more to say?
No.
Tina?
I just, be doing the same thing again, I can't do a nineteen percent increase when we're not supporting the paras increase, I just can't.
Okay. We are going to support a par increase.
Are you giving them a nineteen percent increase, though?
That's outside of the-
Right, I can't do the average.
The range, I mean-
The ran, because-
This is not normal either, nineteen percent? It is not what was considered industry standard.
It was abnormal that we didn't keep up all along.
You have to catch up in positions, too.
But ca- okay, here's, and that's my point, catch up to who? You had one study done of one set of recommendations, okay? Corporations do this, they get multiple studies across the country to, to fill this stuff, so, caught up to who is who I would ask.
The study studied many places, they, they didn't just say, oh, one school did this, or one-
No, I know, it's in Minnesota, yep, I know, places in Minnesota. Okay, I'm just speaking for myself here.
Go ahead.
All I have is my integrity, okay? All I can do is, is say, do what I'm, you say what I'm gonna do, and do what I'm gonna say, and I do that, for the most part, like, I, I try to be as, you know, upfront and blunt, and I'm gonna, I am who I am, and you know what you're gonna get, okay? I am gonna tell you that if we vote to approve this schedule, I will not be able to look the rest of the district workers in the eyes. And I, I feel like I'm taking a hit to my integrity, because I'm, it's hypocritical, I'm saying, okay, yeah, you deserve nineteen percent, but then I'm gonna go back and fight with the paras at the negotiation table.
You are, you are, you have your vote, you may have your vote, and Tina, you, every one of us have a vote.
It's the board, like, we are all the face of this board.
But we feel, just because you feel one way, we feel another, we all have opinions.
So I, I would like to make a recommendation, that we keep the four percent that we approved a little bit ago, and then take this back to the table, and maybe spread it out a little bit more, and figure something else out. We cannot afford to do these gigantor raises, and I can't look them in the eye and feel like I've done a good job here if this gets approved.
Okay, now we're ready to vote, are we, ready to vote? Okay, now, this is going to be a motion to, uh, have, to approve the, the committee's recommendations for the adjustment to the four positions.
You have a motion and a second.
You ha- I have a motion, I have a second, and all those in favor, I think, probably have to raise your hand, so we can see, all those in favor?
Aye.
One, two, three. Any others that I missed? All those opposed, one, two, three, four. The motion does not pass, so then what do we do? We have to have-
We move on, onto the next, the, the only question I would have, and I think we should set a meeting to figure out, pay, payroll wise, we need to figure something out, and I, I, I mean, that's number one, um, and again, it doesn't have to be, but, whether you want, we, we gotta have a conversation about where we're gonna move forward, um, and, because right now, this is not working. We have a sixty-day notice, and again, we, we waited a month here from last time, and we're another month behind. And all I can tell you is, the group is not gonna make it, and I'm not talking to Stacy, it's Michelle, it's Kendra, and we gotta do something. Um, and just like myself, and I'll be honest, and again, I think the staff out here, last two weeks, things have been very short downstairs, you know, the same thing, that's kind of the example of what's running in the business office, and it's been going on and on and on, and it's not getting any better with the group we're working with, and so, I'm just throwing it out there.
What did you say about sixty-day notice?
With, with the company we work with, we have a sixty-day notice, and I'm not saying we severed the, the, the line with them, but what I'm telling you is, we gotta move and start figuring a new solution out, because, and I, and all I can use is an example from the mill, when people leave the mill going, I just can't take it anymore, I'm, you know, I'm working twenty-four, seven, getting buried, getting further and farther behind, take with E S S T. We have to be on board, uh, ju- January first, we're grounded, because there's no time to work on this stuff. And so, we s- we failed tonight, not passing something to where we could, you know, advertise and get the ball rolling. And so, I'm just asking, when are we gonna come back together, so that we can find a solution?
So, what are you, what are you saying, we failed, we didn't fail at anything?
We haven't been able to have it forty-eight thousand in the past.
For the payroll position? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause there are other raises across the board here, are not gonna solve the issue of there being a lot of work in the business office.
Going from forty-eight to fifty-eight, we think is a, a justification, the committee, as well as, that would get that to where we could probably, hopefully, get someone hired, hopefully, a local person, in-house, five days a week, and, you know, start moving, I'm gonna say, back to where we were years ago.
Stacy doesn't have to do three days a week.
It's, it's the three of them.
So, I know, nobody likes this idea, but can we split these up and vote on them one at a time? 'Cause there might be some of these that I would be okay with, but not the nineteen percent.
I'm not gonna recommend, because like I said, you're going based on the CISO- Recommendation of a study that you paid to have done, and if you want another study, we can have another group come.
We wanna pay for another study, yeah.
And, and, and that's the point, that I, I don't think their numbers are out of line.
Well, we've, so we've done the payroll position previously, so, it started at forty-three, January, we increased it, 'cause we couldn't fill it. Can we just look at increasing it to fill it? And only that one, and then vote the rest together? Because we want to post for it?
I could look at that.
What's that?
You would what?
Look at that one separately.
I, I don't know what to tell you if that would be looked at, I, I'm just telling you what the attorney, we, we had the conversation with them, and said, do them or don't do them.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, because we've already did it for a reason, for not being able to, now we're looking to fill it again. It would, and, that would be the only reason, but again, if we wanna keep them together, if that's recommended, that's fine.
We're kinda stuck here.
Yeah, I think we move on, and, and like I say, I think we need to somehow figure out how we're gonna move forward.
So we're gonna do nothing with this part, until we set a date to meet, and discuss the four positions again?
I guess I have concerns if one of the committee members voted against this. So I don't know that-
We need as a whole, right, board as a whole.
Yeah, we need to meet as a whole. Yeah, that's what I think, too.
Yeah.
Are we able to on the eighth, when we're meeting anyways? Is that too far out?
Every day that goes by, all I can tell you is, is, you know, I, I, no one's drawing a line in the sand, it's just, I know that everyone is overloaded. And, like I said, they came up in the conversation over this last month, that we just went another month out, you know, when we didn't act last month. And, everything takes time, it's, it's, let's face it, it's to hire someone, two weeks posting minimum training, you know, interview, probably two weeks or more, notice if they're working, so, I think, I mean, it, it ends up being two months before you, you get any relief. And so that's my concern, is, and, you know, if we don't do something sooner rather than later.
Are you saying you wanna meet, um-
I, I'm just, I'm telling you where-
Today's the eighteenth, are you saying that you wanna meet this week, maybe?
Or you need seventy-two hour notice, and then-
One, two, three, that's the twenty-first. Let's see.
Is there a percentage that we can all agree on, for all the positions, like, I'm gonna throw it out there, three percent?
We did, though, we approved four percent.
Right, four, but I mean, on top of that.
Nope.
You're speaking for one person.
Yeah, well, she asked!
No, I'm, I'm-
She asked!
I'm throwing it out there, so if we did like, another three percent on all these, that's it. Just throwing it out there, I'm trying to-
Right, I think, yeah, I think we're probably just gonna have to discuss it some more.
Okay.
So let's come up with a date, there's the twenty-first word for-
I cannot do the twenty-first, sorry.
Okay. There's- Twenty-first word for any, if, anyone? How many people the twenty-first word would work?
I could do it.
I could do it, word.
One, two, Tina?
What time would it be?
Probably five.
That wouldn't work for me.
What time would work?
Nothing that day.
Oh. You said what time! Um, so that, we're missing one, two people.
Well, hang on, though, keep in mind, sorry, I'm just going back to look at my, if you set the meeting right now, seventy-two hours from now, so you, three, you technically couldn't meet till seven, you know, seven o'clock.
On Thursday.
Whenever we get it posted, yeah, I mean, that's just how this seventy-two hour notice works.
Okay, uh, seven doesn't work for you, Tina? Or-
I can't do the twenty-first, I don't know, I'm sorry.
And then, once we hit the twenty-second, I don't know, that's like-
How about the twenty-seventh?
The twenty-seventh, let's look.
Um, I could do during the day, otherwise-
Yeah, I'm off, I'm off all that week, so I could meet anytime.
Um, just a minute. I'm in Duluth, I can't guarantee what time I'd be back, um, let's see.
If we really wanted to make it interesting, we could get together on New Year's Eve, and, just kidding. Yeah, darn it, we couldn't meet at the school.
I just don't dare, how about the twenty, how about the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, you can do the twenty-eighth.
Anybody cannot do the twenty-eighth?
I'm gone, the twenty-seventh, the twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth.
Well, you- Okay, so, the twenty-ninth? You know, how about the twenty- Twenty-ninth, everybody, except for Bruce?
I think we're out today. I can't, the twenty-eighth, I'm in front of that, the twenty-seventh, the twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth.
Oh, okay, all right, the thirtieth, that's not the thirty-first, right, so-
What's the twenty-second, what was everybody, what, what is everybody going on that day?
The twenty-second, then we look at that already?
Seven P M.
It's Friday. Yeah, that would work, I could do Friday.
I mean, if we did five fifteen on Friday.
Yeah, is that, that's more than seventy-two hours, so we could do it five, right?
Five fifteen.
Everybody okay with that, the twenty-second? My husband gets no birthday, but that's all right. The twenty-second at five o'clock.
Tomorrow's my birthday.
Can we do five fifteen, not five, I'm sorry, I just have kids until five.
Five fifteen.
Yes.
Five fifteen on the twenty-second, we will meet and try to figure this damn thing out.
And that'll be the only thing we're discussing, correct?
Yeah, we, we have to list what we are, um, so I guess my thought is to, you know, what do you want, what are you discussing with possible action?
Okay. All right, five fifteen, very good.
And what is the plan to come to the table with, I guess?
I, I think we have to, I think we have to sit and yak, I think we have to talk, I just don't know that we can have a plan. We can maybe have a big flip-
It's got a list what it's for, though.
Are we gonna discuss with possible action, four positions, one position, three positions?
Well, I think we have to go four positions.
We have to do them all together.
And then we just have some flipboards and start doing some, yeah, some, and talk, math and talk. Okay? Five fifteen, December twenty-second. Woo-hoo, be there or be square. Okay, now, what's the next thing that we have to do, is, the, blah, blah, blah. Truth and taxation, which starts at least at six, and it is past that, so, we receive the presentation, and that is on our handout. And who would like to-
I know, I, I know.
Okay, can I have a, I need a motion to approve that?
No, we, we, we should get the presentation, and then we will take a motion, and a second, too.
Review it a week or something.
Yeah, just look it over, and if you see anything, you can-
Okay, Stacy.
Um, truth and taxation requires to have a public levy, um, the levies, we are certifying tonight, or like, we're certifying, that is basically what we call the twenty-three to twenty-four levy, um, which is really what we recognize for fiscal twenty-five. So, in August, we are projecting out what we believe our student count will be in twenty-five. Um, the total levy being posted on the table is, well, three million, thirteen thousand, twenty-four dollars. Um, because we do not have a twenty-five revenue yet, we basically take that levy and compare it as a percent of your current tentative budget, um, total budget, for all funds. So, right now, your levy represents nineteen percent of your total revenue budget, um, total levy budget for all funds is fifteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-two thousand, eighty-nine and thirty-six dollars. Second page, um, the comparison, the, we're required to talk about the comparison of the old levy to the new levy. So, um, there's basically four main categories to your levy, um, there's a lot of numbers that roll up into all of these, but basically, the first one is your general referendum market value, which includes your referendum equity, transition aid, um, and some other buckets. That is up, um, from one point two million to one point four, that is directly a result of a change in A D M projections from the August of twenty-two to August of twenty-three, um, the current projections shifted our A D M count up by twelve. So, that really is what that net changes. Um, for general other net tax capacity, that is the bucket for all the other items, such as capital, safe schools, arena, community, tree, growth, um, that is relatively flat, um, and again, there's shifts, so it takes three years, twenty-three years for any adjustment to occur. So, the adjustments occurring in the twenty-five levy really are reflective of what happened in twenty-twenty-two, so it takes twenty-three years. So when we talk about levy, we're looking three years back, and we're looking three years forward, so there's kind of a six-year gap there. Um, that one is relatively flat. The community service revenue, what you're looking at is, um, in twenty-four, hundred and five thousand, in twenty-five, we're looking at fifty-three thousand. Um, there's terminology, it's basically called revenue neutral, which is what this is, um, which means basically the total community head revenue is not changed, it's a late, aid levy shift, so we're getting less in levy, we're gonna get more in aid, but there really is no net change to the revenue yet. Um, and debt service, uh, debt service, that is basically your bonds that we levy for each year, um, that again, relatively is flat. Adjustment there is basically, when we have fund balance, we can use that fund balance to offset the debt payment, and so we're required to reduce the levy by the amount of fund balance, that basically is what that adjustment is. So, total levy for twenty-five, again, at three million. The next one, basically, gives you kind of the same gap shot, but basically, a percent increase of fund. Um, we've been upon, the levy is up eleven percent, and we've been, like, projected this off under A D M. Uh, community service is down, but that, um, overall, community service, community head, community service is the same, and debt service is down. The total levy is up seven percent, and again, that is basically for, um, basically because of twenty-one, twenty-one, or twenty-one increase in A D M. Um, overall, your, on the next page, I'm gonna go over to the one that has total revenue sources, so this is just basically another view of the different, um, revenue groups, um, and basically, we've got, um, sorry, I have a daughter that is kind of freaking out right now. Um, so, basically, what it, this is just kind of showing you is, is basically, at this breakout of what your total revenue is for twenty-four, um, how much of it is local sources, local sources is your levy, it is your gate fees, it's your, um, interest, miscellaneous fees, anything like that. Um, so, that three point two million, basically three million of that is your levy. Um, state sources makes up the rest, the bulk of it, federal sources, and then other is basically just, um, other financing sources. Um, state sources makes up the rest, the bulk of it, federal sources, and then other is basically just, um, other financing sources, miscellaneous sales. Um, so your, um, there's just a high graph there, that's the last page. Then, again, it's just basically, you have to do a snapshot of what your tentative expense budget is. Um, this is all funds for twenty-four. Um, and this is built up by program series, so this just takes it, it basically breaks it out between, um, district, eh, administration, district sporting administration, district sports services, your elementary ed. Your total expense budget is fifteen point nine million for all funds, one through eleven. Any questions? And you just need to certify and propose it, and whoever the clerk is, I will send you the actual form to sign leotardically, 'cause I can't print the levy until after we put it-
Questions? Okay, we have a, did I get a motion on that?
Need a motion.
Motion, please.
All motion, move.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.